I'd like to call the Board of Trustees, meeting together Monday, December 29th, at approximately 6:30 PM. In order for everyone to hear our discussions, important as they are, would you please minimize any noise makers you may have in your pocket? Turn them on silent. Roll call, please.
Lino.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Zakjack.
Here.
Enquist.
Here.
And Duffy's excused.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes as published.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? additions, deletions, grammatical remarks or errors? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Comments and correspondence? We'll go with comments first. Does anybody in the audience care to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Get in your soapbox, talk about anything you want.
No, we want to get back to the day.
Correspondence?
We have three items of correspondence, I believe. Let's hand it those out to you. The first of which, I won't get through reading all of this, but Door County Economic Development Corporation wishes to thank the diligent Sister Bay for supporting us financially. There's a letter to that effect. And of course, we authorized that continued support this year, 2015, as part of our budgetary process. Second item of correspondence is, we received some communication from Mr. Mike Beets, who is the insurance broker. The question that was raised at the Personnel Committee level and the Admin and Comp level, just thought I'd bring it here as an appropriate place to hammer it out. I hate Pat's not here to hear it tonight, but Juliana drafted a newsletter essentially saying, hey, we'd like to look at what our options are in 2015. You know, we'll let you know that we might want to get out of this HRA thing. Of course, there was a reply. The reply wasn't included in that. Mike replies, Juliana, thanks for letting me know what's up for next year. Would not know where health insurance is going, but it's good to look at all options. The policy with UHC is good through 11/30/2015. When you shop and look at making a change, you might find it best to change for 1.1 2016. We can work with UHC to have coverage to the end of 2015. We might do an increase in premiums for that one on Papa Jerry Christmas. My people. So, pretty understanding now for applying it in there. And the final piece of correspondence is courtesy of the Wisconsin Department of, I'm sorry, WEDC of Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. We applaud for our grant as part of that $25,000 stretch of funding to do marketing of the, what will now be the two remaining properties. As part of the downtown redevelopment project, we were successful in receiving grant funds of $6,250 for that. Should we continue on with it? I've had some meetings with both property owners on this, and we'll continue to press ahead as this gets a little tighter and firmer.
Now, the two remaining properties being Braun and...
There's Braun Property and the Caspersen Property, and there's some things that are out now that I don't want to get into. Hopefully, have a good year in 2015.
Did you say $6,250?
Yes, ma'am.
And what was that from?
WEDC.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to go in order?
Uh, no, I do not. I would like to... Scott, out of here, not this Scott, that Scott.
Damn.
Item number nine.
Consider motion to act on recommendation of the Plan Commission to adopt Resolution 304-122914, approving a certified survey map by the Village of Sister Bay in the Helmslot.
So, included in your packets were a number of maps related to, or just like three or four, what's going on. To give some additional background, all of you have been involved at some stage or another on a discussion related to this item. Effectively, what is taking place is DOT is purchasing property along our waterfront park, and because of how we purchased it, which is through use of federal and state grant monies, they simply can't write us a check for it. They have to replace it with land and con. DNR regulates the use that it can be, so we're kind of limited in the where it can be as well. The piece that we're talking about tonight, the CSM, is right here in the lot side. Can you flip this? The CSM is for the Helmslot. It is defined in our redevelopment plan for the downtown as being set for development. This has been at least a year-long process for DOT, myself and other village staff members and the DNR in trying to flesh out where and how this thing can go. It's been driven by Yellow Book standards for assessment, which DOT has had to do a couple of times based on some findings of DNR and their internal processes. There's been a lot of man-hours put in by two state agencies in the village to get us to where we are tonight. Effectively, what has taken place is lot number one, which is pretty close to what the Parks Committee saw and what the Finance Committee has seen. It is approximately .712 acres. This will be used for parking, funding from the 6F conversion process, which are those monies associated with the land from Waterfront Park as part of the Basil Drive project are going to be spent on this. Of course, we're the owners of the properties and we're the recipients of approximately $325,000 for lot number one, which we'll be dealing with as we go ahead. We've got that as an item tonight. Lot number two, the Finance Committee and myself have been working with the developer to do what the redevelopment plan sets, which is to get some commercial and residential development down there. Part of that would be to have condoized restroom facilities for the village. We would take ownership of them, male and female changing facilities, shower facilities, outdoors. And of course, it's right beside the parking lots of people that are visiting our brand-new beach or enjoying a concert as they're on their way to the parking lot. Can of course stop by those restroom facilities, and I think it also makes an excellent magnet for the commercial space that's there to create foot traffic through that improvement.
So, in essence, we have the lot that was for development down there. We're going to get about $325,000 from the DOT for that. We're going to get about another $125,000 in improvements that are going to be given to the village by way of the restrooms, change facilities, and outdoor showers. On top of that, to be an additional increase in property value that'll go on tax rolls within the TIF district for the balance of the building that the developers put in place. And it all meets with what we've been trying to do, is we know we need bathrooms down on that end of the new beach, and it's an easy way to get it. It's a very financially feasible way for the village to get it, of course, and to get parking close in to the beach. So while it may not be what we originally had in mind for development, personally, I think overall it turns out a really great, really great facility for the village, and takes a big financial burden off of us, too. Questions? The motion would be in order.
I'd make the motion that we approve the CSM on the Old Helms property.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, let's go to item 10.
Item number 10, page 67 on your Zoom. Consider motion to discuss and act on proposed SMA amendments between the village and DOT.
Okay. I'm going to be brief on this and then turn it over to Jeremy.
Who's also going to be brief.
Yeah, who's also going to be brief. This is the guiding document that engages both us and our responsibilities and requirements for this project and the state through DOT and its responsibilities and requirements for this project. I've been over it, Jeremy and I have talked about it a couple of times today. There are very minor odds and ends that need to be cleaned up for approval, so I'd ask you guys to give us conditional approval on this tonight after hearing what is that Jeremy's got to say. So with that, Jeremy?
Jeremy, would you introduce yourself and your companion so we have it for the record, please?
Sure. Jeremy Asher, DOT Project Manager. Mike Helmer, who is our Environmental Coordinator, as well for the DOT. I guess, for the most part, we have a state municipal agreement, which is a mechanism that we use to create a financial in or obligation, whatever the obligations are between our state project and the municipality that we're working within. On this project, it's been a very complicated set because 2005, I believe, there was a credit awarded to the village that, for storm sewer repairs that were done, that would be used as part of this project. So we've been working with the village for a couple of years, trying to figure out all the different ways that we can use this credit up, what's allowed, what isn't allowed, things like that. The credit itself, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, was $250,000 originally.
$275,000.
$275,000 originally, and then that grew at 4% per year, so we ended up being over $400,000 at the time of construction, so...
Nice.
Better than the buck.
So, you're welcome.
Thank you.
But, a lot of the terms and conditions are very boilerplate that are in the SMA, with the exception of number nine, which really lays out the basis for the local participation. When I put it together, I really tried to be very clear in terms of how, you know, how we came up with our numbers and anything like that, so it's there. The biggest thing with this is everything's based on estimated cost of, prior to letting. So the SMA would be updated with those actual let costs, although the quantities should remain the same for the basis. So there will be some adjustment needed, but we do need the approval, saying that the village is on board to do these items in order for us to have that final incorporation into our plans, so. I think that's the best way. I don't know if you wanted to go through item by item or anything.
No, I do want to hit just one highlight or a couple of highlights with them. Yeah, this credit, you know, as Jeremy indicated, the items are going to flex. We don't know what the final tally will be until it's a let and DOT actually receives bids back. So these are, as I indicated, all estimates. I do have one hard item back, and that's for the lighting fixtures themselves, and it came in about $1,500 less on the total than what we anticipated. So, hey, there's a good one, but somewhere else we may get hit with a higher number on, something that's a long way, so I would anticipate those. The other one, if you'll look in there... I'm just going to call your attention to a couple of them. Page 67 of your Zoom, since this one's come up at a number of committees for consideration, Caspersen Pond pipe maintenance. As a part of this project, there will be sleeving. We've already done the TBing and the cleanout of this section. It's a unique item within the village in that we inherited it as part of the Johnson purchase, and this will sleeve a portion of that to give, you know, much longer lifespan to that outfall pipe. When a developer comes along and changes things around, I would imagine we'll be glad that we did this, so that we can provide some value there for them if they change around whatever they need to change around, if they change something around. Another piece of it will be on page 68, Mill Road West, and that's the piece that we just talked about, this parking lot. We don't know where this credit is going to end up eventually. Right now, it's showing that we're a little bit over. A few months ago, when we were taking a look at this, we were, you know, five-ish thousand dollars under that we were going to have left over. So whether it comes over, whether it comes under, DOT estimates that the cost of parking lot improvement on this site would be $70,000. What DOT is doing in this, just so you all will have an idea, we're going to talk about this later tonight, this site will be used as a staging area for DOT's entire projects. There will be heavy machinery parked there in place throughout the construction project. A piece of that, when I say a piece of that, right, would be that they are going to take care of the parking lot, the estimated cost of the parking lot, by considering all of the credit and then anything beyond that. Jeremy, did I miss that?
No.
I got it in print.
That would essentially be correct. Essentially, the parking lot itself, because it falls under the 6F, usually would be a village. Because we are doing the impacts and things like that, it's a mutual benefit. We're using it for staging. The village gets it back. At least that we would absorb any additional cost above and beyond where that credit lies up to that price of the parking lot, so.
Question, when you say the staging, are you talking about the cobblestone or the, you know, the brick area, or are you talking about...
Talking about, when this whole thing is said and done, John, I anticipate that brick area will go away.
Become payment.
And become payment.
All right. That was my question, because, you know, if they start putting heavy kripa down, you're going to destroy that brick. I have no problem with that, just that it's really going to be parred.
Yep. There's one piece that's missing in here, and I'll bring that and fill in the gap on your knowledge base. DOT had a timeline they were working with to make sure this project wasn't going to get delayed by another year, and this was the driving thing on it. So if you all recall, I took it to Parks twice and said, hey, we've got some urgency on this for action. We looked at a couple of options, and we got Robert E. Lee and Associates to draft us some layouts, some sample layouts. And the thought at the time was, the whole lot was going to be bought by DOT. We weren't going to have any private development there. Let's save as many trees as we can, because that was the data we had at the time. Subs going to that, DNR got involved. The entire assessment had to be redone. Things changed, so we ended up with less area being taken up. Hey, fantastic, we're going to get some private development out of this as well, and now we've got a smaller parking lot. Because we have a smaller parking lot, the Admin Committee and I met, because DOT had a very tight line to send this off to the federal government, and said, let's maximize parking here. So what we'll end up with is 70-ish, maybe 90 spaces when it's all said and done. Robert E. Lee has put together a proposal for us that we bring it to Parks. We will have to pay for the engineering on this. That's going to be $10,000 or less to have this engineered out. However, DOT's picking up $70,000 parking lot improvement. We may have some stormwater improvements. We won't know that until we get in the engineering end of things.
And the ability to use this as staging area during construction, because when we have the storm sewer going through by the block by block, it gives the ability for that machinery, a place to be parked, so we can reopen everything on the weekends in that September, October timeframe. It gives them a place to store all the materials, so it gets them out of the way, so ingress egress with all the materials is a lot easier, should speed up construction.
It's close in. You can't be closer. Can't get it correct.
That's perfect. It's off the side of the road, or it's off, you know, it's off the main road and stuff like that, so it works.
Anytime we can give a contractor a place to stage stuff, do those, especially in this type of the instance where it's very high tourism, very high impact, a lot of traffic, it's very hard to get in and out. They can pretty much plan their time and be a lot more efficient than what they would be under normal circumstances, so.
So, we're looking for, again, conditional approval on this. Legal counsel should take a look at it. We'll send this off to Randy and also the, to call those items out that Jeremy had helped out for cleanup.
So then you require a conditional...
Yeah.
Or just approve it.
Subject to conditional changes agreed upon between Admin and DOT.
Yep. So moved.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I have an aside question. I was asked this by a constituent. We're going to use concrete, of course, for the reconstruct. With the change in the value of a barrel of oil, has that altered DOT's plans or thought process on using concrete versus asphalt?
At this point, we're not going to change. So no.
Thank you.
We're remaining concrete. I mean, concrete was our driving factor for a long time, just because with the cold weather that we're probably going to be up against, it gave us options to be able to do that work versus asphalt. Having plants open later, that cost is going to be extremely higher anyways than concrete and...
Heated truck beds.
So, it was more of a staging decision, had the time, and the cost was playing the fact, but I would say concrete and asphalt on this job were actually pretty close anyways when we originally did that assessment, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is that it's approved on the condition that what?
Pending legal review and administrative workout.
Okay.
One of the administrative, we have a motion, what, not approval on the floor, but one of the workouts is the utility work to be done. We have some utility relocation. Jeremy and I have just talked about this. There, to simplify things on the job site, I've asked DOT to have the actual construction work in with their contractors so they can time things as they need to. We don't have any hiccups in the process from a liability standpoint, and I think rightfully so, DOT has said, you know, you guys need to do your own testing, operations, maintenance, all those other fun things on it, staking. So we will have to get utilities to contract for that section of work. They'll pass along, you know, who their site supervisors will be, and we may use those and we may use somebody else for that process. We will have some expenditure there. On utilities, we're looking at 100, let's just call it $120,000 hit.
Just as a point of information, I guess, we selected to hire a diet engineering for the project, overseeing the advocacy of people, so they would be engineers on-site for construction, overseeing the early portion.
Do they play well with our consultants?
We'll find out.
Okay, so...
They're good. I think they'll benefit. I've got a good reputation.
Okay, so is this the motion then that the Village of Ford approves the state municipal agreement for statelet highway project ID 4610-06-0071, pending legal review and resolution of some minor administrative issues?
Yep.
That's exactly what the motion was, that change.
You have a good memory.
Are we going to stick right with a grand slam for DOT here?
Yep.
Either nine and 11. Consider motion to discuss and act on acquisition of land and fee improvement temporary limited easements by the DOT.
Okay. Wish Dennis was here for this one tonight. You can help me where appropriate. You got a comment?
No, I did ask him. I thought that with this discussion with you, it should go smooth, so.
Okay.
He's hopeful.
Here's the long and the short. There's one piece of this, we'll get to the very end, I'm not going to get into it too deep. I started having conversations with the Finance Committee about this, right? So what DOT is saying, let me pull my map up. We talked earlier about the 6F and how those monies would be spent. That's roughly $325,000. Sorry. That $325,000 going towards the Old Helms lot, DOT will hand that to us. That's part of what we're talking about tonight. That is for the area outlined in green. $325,000, $277,000, that's for the land that is fee and simple. There is another section of money. The green outline will receive the combination of federal land, state funds to acquire Marina Park way back when.
So that's the 6F.
That's 6F, okay. Stewardship monies were used on all of the pink parcels. However, the parcel which is the beach isn't impacted as part of DOT's project. However, this one is. This dollar amounts $204,755. What we want to move forward with tonight, given that we have a huge outstanding table with line burial, is to close this out with DOT for payment of that piece of land that we just talked about on the Helms Cottage property, the temporary limited easements that DOT will acquire for all of Waterfront Park, which the Basil Drive Committee has looked at 15 times and Parks has looked at 15 times. We've had a lot of public hearings about, public information sessions about, and the improvements they're on. And for the improvements they're on, it's things such as light poles and signs largely that we're talking about. None of our structures are really significantly impacted. A lot of our flower beds are impacted, but those are all compensated as part of this process. So we're looking at a total of $561,560 coming to us from DOT for that process, with an additional $204,750 held as a separate pot of money, which I'm checking on.
Can I make a clarification?
Sure.
Maybe. Originally, the discussion centered around one parcel. The DNR, in discussion with DOT and with ourselves over many, many months, determined that there's actually three parcels involved. The green one and two pink ones down here. See that, where it says number two and number three? That's actually two separate parcels. When Bob structured this together, he split off that parcel where the boathouse is, separate from where the Johnson gift store used to be. Okay. In order to get the 6F conversion done on a timely basis to not delay the project another year, the DNR agreed to split off the green parcel and do the Helms lot that we approved tonight with the parking on and other development, and send that off to the federal government so that's packaged out and gone. Separate from that are these other two parcels, which was additional money. That's the...
$204,000.
The $204,000. That $204,000 requires the purchase of another parcel to be completed. That is what is currently being done in the background. Zeke doesn't want to go any further because it'll have to be a closed session item to discuss it any further, but there are people being talked to, there's things trying to be done with parcels within the village to take care of that other dollar amount.
And it'll be at least spring, the parcel that we're investigating, for them to do the, what they need to do for environmental and archaeological studies. DOT has some guidelines they have to go by to get clearance to be able to move ahead with a purchase. So there's, that will be the driving factor behind if this will work. If it won't, if it won't, we have a backup plan, and we'll bring that before you with that.
But this, doing it this way allowed DOT to send forward to the federal government the 6F, so that got done on a timely basis, and the DNR agreed that as long as there was progress being made on the rest of this, that they would sign off on it.
Because the stewardship dollars are held...
By the state.
By the state.
Not by the federal.
So we could separate those processes.
Right. That's why it was able to be separated out.
No government to hold it.
So what started off, what we thought started off as one parcel became a bunch.
A bunch. And DOT, Jill Hilber really deserves a pat on the back for working on this. I know this is her first one out of the gate working on this thing, and it's been a monster to deal with and wrangled down between all the different agencies she's had to deal with. What'll end up happening as a result of this is some deeds will be cleaned up through Waterfront Park.
Well, and it's actually, not only DOT, but I think the administrator, Dave, and whoever's been involved in this, needs to be applauded. This outcome of that property and the way that property's worked out on the Helms is a huge win for the village.
Thank you, sir.
I know it took a lot of work, but that was...
It was a little over here.
Well, whoever, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Oh, yes, sir.
Who wants to spend this money?
You'll see on there, pending review by legal counsel. This is pretty boilerplate stuff. I'd do like to run it past Randy Desmond, just to make sure it's all copacetic. So if you guys will conditionally approve it on, recommend that the board conditionally accept the offer of the DOT to the properties along the Waterfront Park, pending review by legal counsel.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, DOT.
Thank you.
Yes. For the stewardship money? Do we have a drop dead date?
Um, yes. DNR is going to force one on DOT, so me casting this big, okay? We looked at every piece of land we possibly could look at in the village and just outside the village to try to come up with a solution, and it just wasn't possible. So we have one... So, we have one that's inside the village that may end up in this incredibly awesome thing when we're all said and done, if it all works out. If not, we've got a plan B that hopefully will have some added value somewhere else.
So, we don't have that date yet, then?
Uh, Jeremy?
Weren't they talking April?
Mike, when do, we can't get out to do art history stuff until April first?
It's, yeah.
General?
It's.
First part of May.
Whenever we can complete that, and it comes back yea or nay, I think we're.
Okay.
We're on that.
I think we're gonna keep going ahead and have a lot of discussions prior to that, so if it ever even happens, it can happen fast.
Yeah, and I'm keeping the ball moving on the other side, so that'll all be lined up, ready to go.
So, we're in no danger of losing this money by not having anything done until May?
Your project isn't danger of being held up for a year if we don't.
Correct. But I just worry about the.
Are you gonna lose it?
Yeah.
No, the stewardship property has to be replaced at some point in time. The DNR has a timeline on this, a deadline on this, just to keep it moving, but I don't think there's a firm deadline where it needs to be done. They already said they were gonna send us a letter saying we could certify that right away, it's being clear as long as.
We'll move.
The six F stuff is moving forward. I don't think we've gotten that letter yet, but it's, it's their own program, it's their own requirements. The law con funding through Park Service, they cannot, they cannot release that, that property transaction can't happen until after the six F conversion is complete through the National Park Service.
Okay.
So, we can't cert the real estate as being cleared for the contractor to go and do the work.
Which is why we had to send off the stuff with the parking lot plan on it, all the stuff.
Understand. Right. I just worry, it seems like things that seem might be easy just never.
No.
That's why.
Essentially, but the, the federal restrictions are much harder and more rigid, I guess, than what the state ones are, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, DOT.
Thanks, DOT.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go back up to item number one. Consider a motion to act on recommendations of the plan commission to amend and recreate section sixty-six dash oh seven eleven, the zoning code shopping sign, shop, shopping center signage by adopting ordinance two thirty-four dash one twenty-two nine fourteen. As you are aware, we have been working with, um, Country Walk Association for a period of months to do something differently with the signage available, and we recreated a section within the zoning code to allow the shopping center signage. I don't know if you had a chance to read this or not. We bumped it around for a couple of months at Plan Commission. We had Country Walk Association owners come here and discuss it with us, we had a public hearing on it, okay? And as a result of that, the Plan Commission made the recommendation to forward this up to us for final approval. Basically, it allows them a larger, taller sign up on forty-two, some signage offsite over on fifty-seven, that'll have to work with. It allows additional interior signage on the individual businesses, some larger, some smaller, depending upon the size. And it also allows some exterior signage on forty-two for the buildings that face the back, that face over onto Highway forty-two. So, it gives the individual owners over there a little bit more discretion on how they wanna do their signage, but it also allows a much larger signage statement to be made out at the highway, so you can actually see that in fact. A lot of that was at Shane's suggestion to make it larger and taller than what they were asking for, and, um, everybody agreed to it after we had the public hearing and had a more discussion on it. So, in a nutshell, that's it. Do you wanna add anything?
I think you hit it on the head. This, as I mentioned, this was months of work. You have dilapidated structures. I just checked prior to coming up here. You have units for sale in the Country Walk shops that are right at ten thousand dollars, actually sub ten thousand dollars. You have them there, you have two others at fourteen-five. When those sold new, they were close to a hundred thousand dollars apiece. So, there is significant, what I would consider blight there. Anything you can do to foster vibrancy is gonna be a positive change. We also talked to Plan Commission level about when we go with our wayfinding signage later on this year and locate those, potentially creating some signage on fifty-seven and Country Walk to direct people off of fifty-seven into that shopping center as well. That's our, ours and Country Walk can't buy our, our code to do that, so we'd have to adopt it on their behalf, and we'll address that at a later date.
This would also apply to ShopCo, wouldn't it? The larger signage and stuff like that, where they could take advantage of this?
I've, I've not pulled a tape. I've done a, a general, this looks like it would apply, ShopCo would be one, and there's a two acre requirement.
Yeah.
And I'm barely certain that's gonna meet that.
Oh, that will, definitely.
Yeah. We also.
ShopCo, when, when ShopCo changed the signage from permitted to ShopCo, I don't think they took full advantage of what they were allowed to do. They, they could have a much different sign than what they currently have.
Yes.
And I don't know if that's a matter of contacting them and working with the manager to understand, but I think when they originally made the change, they didn't understand the changes that had been made in the code.
I thought there was a vague discussion about this in the past as well. I had no previous administrator.
I did.
Was asked to do that as well, contacting them about it, but I.
I haven't had with Lori already about this, and Lori said, yeah, we'd absolutely love to take a look at some new signage if we had the opportunity to do that, so I would expect that after that's all said and done, they'll, they'll look at where they can take advantage of this as well.
We should contact them.
Sure.
And let them know what the new code is and, and what they can do, because that would just be beneficial for their business.
It seems like I'm having about one meeting a month or every other month with Keith and Lori to kinda keep things moving to the uptown. Same with the Country Walk shop owners, they invite me up from time to time for odds and ends, so. You will notice, this only applies to B1. That was one of the discussions we had, that this wouldn't be in our downtown if for some reason somebody bought attractive land, for example, the Braun property, or a combination of Casperson and others that are part of our downtown redevelopment plan, the signage standard would not apply to them. This would only be in the B1 designation.
Okay. Could always be changed accordingly.
It, it could. I'll tell you the.
Motion by Lino.
Second.
Any other discussion, comments?
You should abstain.
Pardon?
You should abstain.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry with one abstention.
That sounds bad.
Item number two, consider a motion to act on a recommendation of the Plan Commission to adopt resolution three oh three dash one point two nine fourteen, approving a certified survey map for Scandia Village.
Sometimes I feel like I'm gonna repeat, because we just did this a little bit ago.
Yeah, we just did this a little bit.
So, um, it's a map, it's a roadway.
It's a Groundhog Day.
Yeah, it is Groundhog Day. Um, we have received, just to hit the whole thing again, we've received some complaints about, you know, this road doesn't meet whatever it is. Uh, we can't turn like we wanna turn, trucks have trouble turning.
If you recall, this, I don't know if everybody was a part of that discussion, there were a number of constituents that had raised an issue that the road going into Scandia and where the resale shop was had been altered or changed in such a way that you couldn't make the corner anymore, and that trucks and cars were having a difficult time making the corner. So, we referred that to our village administrator to jump right on that and figure out what was going on.
So, Chris Heck and I got in the big ladder truck, took a ride up there and drove around and turned around everywhere that we could turn around, and Chris said, no, I don't have a problem with this. There probably are some issues with where the stop signs are located from a convenience standpoint. They've just recently been moved, and we'll go back and take another, another look at them, maybe later on in the summer.
Might be an issue with driver's license issuance or something.
That's, they, uh, that probably could be a thing, John. I'd recommend the plan commission reference approval. We'll still have to move forward.
John, someday you may be there.
I'm dedicating the right of way to us, this is the first step. Make a motion to approve resolution three zero three one two two nine one four, certified survey map for property for Christian Meredith.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion carried.
Tell him he was just on vacation.
Hey. Consider a motion to act on a recommendation of the Plan Commission to amend and recreate section sixty-six dash oh eight oh eight, noise levels in various zoning districts of the zoning code by adopting ordinance two three five dash one two two nine one four.
Let me go through the history. I'm telling them about the eleven o'clock phone calls. I think that one story warranted.
Well, I, this past summer, I got a number of phone calls in the evening from various constituents that were complaining about noise level. Sometimes it was as simple as answer the phone, hello, listen to this! And hear the noise, et cetera, et cetera. As you are well aware of, when we made the changes to our liquor code this last year and liquor licensing, we changed the timing of outdoor music from eleven o'clock till ten-thirty and vacating outdoor seating by eleven. It continued to be a problem throughout the summer, to the point where we agreed we needed to take a look at, through parks, through Plan Commission, et cetera, we need to take a look at some type of noise level ordinance, and that's what this has done. We held a public hearing on it, Zeke went out and metered with sound meter, decibel meter at various locations at various times, and came back with what he thinks was our best effort at doing this. So, the parks looked at it, Plan Commission looked at it, they've agreed, and this is the sum of what was done.
We took it to SBA as well, they took.
I'm sorry, SBA, right.
Yep. So, a number of entities had a chance to engage with this, and what I attempted to craft was to take all of those various meetings together, the public input together, create a draft. The public hearing was held at the Plan Commission level earlier tonight, nobody spoke against, they really were just curious, the one person that showed up for it about the item itself. We engaged in a self-imposed nine o'clock cutoff of the concerts in the park, that's what that individual was interested in, is basically, when are you gonna cut off concerts in the park? I'm speaking with him. Other than that, what this attempts to do is take care of the issue. I will say that after we had the public hearing, I didn't get a single call. Did you?
No, not after.
After we had our first public hearing, they began to self-regulate, we didn't have any issues.
There's always next year.
Well.
Page, as an SBA representative, do you have any comments on this?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what's, what's the finals and final work, what's the time and the decimal level.
Yeah, I'll read it just out. Any activity or operation of any use producing noise other than ordinary vehicular noise shall be conducted so that no noise from the activity or operations shall exceed the following limits at the lot line on which the noise is emanating for a duration of thirty seconds or longer. All districts except Parks P1, variable noises at or above eighty-five decibels. So, if you've got a, what I'm trying to say here is if you're at eighty-five decibels, whether you're up or down, right, but as long as you're above eighty-five decibels for thirty seconds, that triggers the violation. I think the only time we're gonna run into that is with amplified music, either from a car stereo or a concert or some kind of a live performance, somebody pounding on a nail, right, I guess we could quantify that as being of a sustained duration if they're obtuse about.
So, is there no, I mean, is there a noise appropriate time on that?
Uh, we didn't place a time, or I didn't place a time on this. And Plan Commission left it as it was. It's regulated in the liquor licenses for a time cutoff, so that provides one set of time cutoffs for activities, and then the villages historically have a nine o'clock time cutoff in our parks, and of course, at ten o'clock they have to be vacated.
So, for the tavern, the bars that have outside music, is that?
And it's the end.
Ten thirty?
It's ten thirty, music ends at ten thirty.
Vacate.
Just so we're clear on this.
Vacate at eleven.
They can be eighty-five decibels at the lot line at any time before that ten thirty. That doesn't mean they get to go to eighty-five decibels after ten thirty, right? It's about being a good neighbor. And that's where we're getting the calls, it was a combination of you're playing too late and you're playing too loud. This addresses the playing too loud, our liquor licensing addresses the playing too late.
So, it's stay at the ten thirty, you know, for just.
The village will debate that at that time when they do liquor licensing.
Any question?
Is there a reason that the liquor license is tied to the time? I mean, what if somebody doesn't have a liquor license and wants to be too noisy, too late?
Eighty-five decibels would be it, it'd be the.
Be the same.
The trigger, yeah. So, this, this becomes the catch-all regardless of the time. If somebody's out there for thirty seconds at twelve o'clock at night playing a radio too loud, right, eighty-five decibels, I go to their lot line with a decibel meter, you know, here you are. What seems to drive the complaints isn't the one-off, you know, kid driving down the road, even though if you talk to one of our Plan Commission members, she'll tell you about her grandson coming through, you know, exceptionally loud, but that's a momentary thing, it's not a thirty-second duration. Thirty-second, I think, came from John at Parks, did that plug in?
What about weddings or things that get in the park?
If you.
Do they use music, or are they allowed, or do they have to be done by ten o'clock?
Parks are accepted from this.
Yep.
Because the parks are licensed and permitted on a case-by-case basis for each activity that takes place.
So, the language.
If there's a wedding and they're out of there, they're told they have to shut everything down and be quiet by ten thirty.
Okay. It's kinda early for a wedding.
Yeah.
But we, we might wanna bring that up at Parks later on, especially as we complete our beach project and start looking.
And we wanna be able to use that. Yeah, we wanna use it more.
But that was the thinking behind accepting it from the.
From this?
From this, that parks could make individual determinations, given the event that was taking place, that they could alter.
And we may end up, at some later date, extending the time in the park for weddings. The parks, the committee would take a level to say that midnight is the time, um, the yacht club will probably be our, our complainer there, and they've already called and talked to me about things such as that, to say we're not, we just wanna make sure the noise is at a reasonable level, essentially what they're getting at.
You could almost, it's, Parks is excluded from this anyway, you could do it on a permanent basis.
That's it.
When you have a wedding, just say that you have to be quiet by.
Your music.
Eleven or twelve, or whenever it is, or.
Cut off your, cut off your amplified music at whatever time, or turn it down at whatever time.
But the nervous, wanting to be, the wedding's probably gonna go to twelve or one o'clock in the morning, they're not gonna, and they're gonna be dancing, and there's gonna be, you know, music, and you really want, really wanna encourage it, you don't wanna be shutting them down.
I agree.
You know, for the venue.
So, by doing it this way, it gives permit, the parks permits some discretion.
Something we may also wanna look at in parks just related to this is planting some hedges along that property line against the yacht club to provide some noise buffer. We may wanna look at putting some kind of a wall feature there. There are a number of things we could do to abate.
Something considered more expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Like the freeway.
Well, that's what I was getting at, right?
Put the razor wire on top of it?
Well, the bow of our sand.
You'd have someplace for the pigeons to sit. Do we have a motion?
Not yet.
I will make the motion to accept the recommendation from Plan Commission to approve ordinance two three five one two two nine one four.
Second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, consider a motion to discuss the village's marketing focus and budget for 2015.
All right, so, I wasn't at the previous, um, board meeting, I understand. There was some conversation from some board members to give direction to Shane about what direction the marketing committee would go in. Had I been here that, I would've expressed some thoughts on it, so there are a number of compounding factors I'd like to lay out on the table before I turn this over to Shane to talk. The beach project, uh, there are two things to consider, one is timing of, and two is scope of project. So, if I look at the beach, or the beach project scope is, this is degraded some, it's, if you guys noticed, the packet was huge, there's a ton of layers in this thing. Everywhere you see that looks like this black color and the dotted line area is where the project is, so that is the limits of where the contractor can move his vehicles in and So that is the limits of where the contractor can move his vehicles in and out of to access this area. There's 7,000 cubic feet of material that has to be excavated out. There are rainwater garden features that by DNR standards have to be input to be compliant with their stormwater standards. And if you look at how much area we have, this is the approximate location of the pavilion at the time this diagram is put together. This really is the area that you guys could conduct activities. If you look at how wide those brick papers are, you have almost an equal area here on which they have concerts during whatever time of year this is going on. Our contract on the beach says that they're supposed to have substantially completed this by May 21st to attract bidders because of how things came in the first time. We had conversations and said, yes, we would like you to attempt this by May 21st. However, we realize that weather is going to be a mitigating factor in this. And if you go over that timeline, we will, based on the weather, elect to be punitive or not per the contract guidelines, meaning we could waive that $500 a day, or whatever it is, we chose to do so. So we want the contractor to complete on time. However, even if, you know, the weather's great, right now the contractor's talking about getting in in February to build the breakwater route. The company that's producing the sand is already supposed to have produced the sand. The company that's producing the rock for the breakwater is supposed to have produced the rocks so that all this can move ahead, and we're not impacted by winter weather conditions, or severe winter weather conditions. Hopefully, they've done what it is they talked about doing. And that's as far with that conversation as I can go. What that contract doesn't provide for is the restoration. So if we think about this, we spent close to $3,000, no, sorry, close to $4,000 sodding the pavilion, that area out there. And that was a rush to get ready for the first concert. And Paige could speak to that experience, what it was like to have a fence up where people couldn't walk. The displeasure people expressed about not being able to get close to the stage. I don't know how much area around the stage will be impacted by this, until we get into the project. However, again, even if May 21st is when they're finished, June 21st, July 21st would be when seeded grass would be able to be walked, and we'll have to have this whole area fenced off until then. So sometime after July 21st, if the contract is completed per the specifications, to get out there and do stuff on it. So what's happening across the street? You've got a DOT staging area on this parcel right here that currently is wide open space where things maybe could take place. You're going to have lots of construction equipment there, starting in July. So just as this finishes up, not right across the street, all this gets torn up. At the same time, we're working with a developer to put in those restroom facilities that we've talked about, and to engage in private development here, maybe some over 2,600 million dollar facility when it's all said and done. 6,900 million dollar facility when it's all said and done. So this area across the street is impacted as well. We won't have it available for parking, where we now have the brick parking lot, that goes away to be able to use that for parking for these events and things. Plus, you're going to have the contractors cruising in and out of there, right? Heavy equipment coming in and out of mill for this time period during the construction project. Gravel and aggregate being moved along during this time period as well. I would expect to see large quantities of aggregate placed on this property for staging. So that said, Shane, it's all yours.
Well, he just outlines concerns that were brought up in the marketing committee. And please understand, this was not a guided, I was not influencing anybody. To tell you the truth, I was going very hard for that, for what I was asked to do. And what the common concern was is why, we want to use the money to maximize the amount of people that are going to be coming into this village at this given time in our, I guess, development. So we want to make sure that we're spending the money as wise as we possibly can. And what we have, as a consensus, basically thought is that putting any money into something that is going to happen at the concert pavilion in the early stages of, or early portions of the season is what we feel to be a good start. Now, not to say that we can't do it, and we won't do it. But we feel that there were two other options that might be a better use of this money, and still be able to use the pavilion. And one was basically run a bunch of small concerts, bring in speakers, bring in comedians, bring in family entertainment. That is not going to maybe bring in that big 1,500, 2,000, 3,000 people into this area, which is just going to be a nightmare to kind of control. But to bring in these 3, 4, 500, 500-person crowds to, but do a lot of them, and spread that money out over quite a bit. And the second one that was brought up is to piggyback on something that's already happening. Marina Fest, something of the sorts like that, just add to them by adding another day to Marina Fest. Or maybe even pushing it on into Fall Fest. Or, I mean, there's so many different festivals and events that go on throughout the year that we could try to influence and help, help their attendance. What it is being, being brought forward to is just a guidance, a collective thought of, now we have the whole picture of what's going to happen. Where can we push this next meeting to go? Because we're at a point now where it's, we need to make things happen. Because if we're going to book concerts, we need to start booking them now. If we're going to do other things, we need to start doing them now. We need to start getting these ideas in place and start the ball rolling. So the marketing committee would like a very clear, not even very clear, just we see what we have, where should we go from here?
So you don't want to go with the Sister Bay Woodstock with a big muddy field?
Yeah, I mean.
Couple days of rain?
We did talk about dropping bulldozers around out there and having that as an attraction.
Oh, I mean, there's a lot of great ideas that we could do, in all honesty. We thought about bringing in some sort of trade show, holding it out at TKH, having a demonstration area out here. I mean, there's a lot of fun things that can be done in lieu of the construction, and really bring, highlight it, you know, make the largest sandbox in the world for the time being, you know, something like that. But are these feasible events, and is that a wise use of the money? I think that's the thing we're looking for.
Based on what you said, I'm inclined to go with the multiple small events. Kind of go that route because they'll be easier to handle, you can change the venues around easier, depending upon where construction is or not is. We have a number of venues that we can use.
Yeah.
So if the primary one doesn't work out, we can switch it to someplace else.
Okay.
And so I'm inclined to go that. I'm not inclined to add anything to Marina Fest, not because I don't want Marina Fest, or don't like Marina Fest, but that's so late in the year. So to focus on that, I'd rather focus on the rest of the year first. And you can still throw something at Marina Fest.
Okay.
But that's just my personal opinion.
One of the ideas that came out of Marina, or what came up with Marina Fest was just doing a soft opening of the beach. Because by that point, it's pretty safe to say that it's going to be ready to go at that point.
And if you used, if you used it as an extension of Marina Fest, fine.
Correct.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, do Sunday or something.
Yeah, but see, if you extended Marina Fest, I'm in favor of, like I said, that it's valid. But I'm also in favor of extending Marina Fest to another day. So you can put more of a, you can stretch it further down that beach. And as you're talking about your soft opening of the pavilion, that'd be a perfect opportunity to do the second day of Marina Fest, to stretch it further on down there. But then you could do, you know, it would be feasible to do a carnival type, type thing with rides like they have down at Pumpkin Patch and other things in that park, and drive it all the way down that park on that second day.
And there had been discussion with SBA in the past, certainly revived, to do something additional on that second day. I mean, Paige, Paige made the point, like two years ago, we had a discussion, she made the point, you bring all these people up here on Labor Day weekend, there's nothing else going on. And you bring them all to Sister Bay in that one day, what, you know, why can't we figure a way to keep them here that second day? It's a three-day weekend.
Yep.
Well, everybody's taking a hotel for three days, or three nights are required.
Every night, minimums, yep.
And a while back, didn't they leave the tent up and then do like a concert on Sunday? They used to do like a Christian music concert on Sunday. And something, because we had some guests, they know that stayed for that reason, to be able to do the.
And that was the church that did that the next day, correct?
Something like that. But, you know, so, and there were people that did go down to do that, so I, I think adding is a good idea.
Well, adding to it, and also, you talked about a soft opening type thing with the pavilion. If you had that second day Marina Fest, you could take a pretty good van and put them in the pavilion and just, and just march them all from, you know, the Marina area all the way down to our new park. You know, and all the, everything is set up in between, you know, still going. It gives you a perfect venue to celebrate the entire waterfront.
I said, yeah, and if the beach is open, I mean, the water's warm. You could have paddle boards or things going on in the water.
There, there is a funding slash logistical issue with using the marketing committee dollars to do something like that on the second day. Because the following year, there, I would envision that the marketing committee is going to push that pavilion as hard as they possibly can, and that money's not going to be there to do that for Marina Fest. So to find something that's self-sustaining with Marina Fest is probably the most logical and smart choice to do. But to add a small event as part of our overall, you know, doing 50 small events for $2,000 apiece, or however much it is, 25 smaller events. But yeah, I think that's feasible, but to throw a good portion of money at Marina Fest when the money is almost guaranteed not to be there next year is going to be a letdown to the following year of Marina Fest.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, I'm not talking about a great deal of money. I'm just saying, if you were to extend that day and extend the activities and had some type of a soft opening in the pavilion, it gives you a foundation to work off of, you know. Then it, then it's up to the Marina, the Marina Fest committee, the board, to determine, geez, this was very successful, and we brought all these people and kept them in town for two days, how do we want to fund this next year? Or do we want to? You know, did it work, did it not work? And, and it may not be on the marketing committee, you know, budget. Maybe it becomes on the Marina committee mid-budget, or Marina Fest committee, or wherever it might be. But it gives them a foundation to say, hey, we tried it, we seen what the success can be.
The benefit to it, John, is that if we do it, we've had some discussion at earlier meetings about this being a waterfront fest, and I know Shane is, you know, working with the Marina committee to grow this thing organically, which has started as a nucleus up around the Marina, and then it began to bring it down into this area. The logical thing would be that we have some addition on the Marina Fest. I don't recommend that you all plan anything until at least the middle of August, if not later, for the site. And that would go for the small events as well, right? And by the way, at that time, that's also when you're going to have the bulldozers and the construction equipment leaving the staging area, going out to the top of the hill. Every day, you're going to see all of that equipment moving back and forth.
And, and let's back up, because originally, the original idea was to do something with the pavilion and the newly opened beach. Incorporate that with some ideas that SBA had to bring in a new festival into downtown. And I'd still like us to pursue that at some point in time.
Agreed.
But given what's going on, I understand it can't happen this year. But longer term, I would personally still like to see that.
Well, I think we still need to work towards that in the marketing committee. I mean, I think there's certain individuals around that can still be talked to, the seeds can be planted.
I think you just hit on it, Zeke, when you said waterfront, or, and instead of a waterfront festival, waterfront park for the village and celebrate all of it. And to your point with the construction moving in there, if you do the second day in Marina Fest, it becomes, you know, as part of it. You stretch that all the way out, and we have that material without construction, or the land available without construction. Because you can stretch Marina Fest all the way through the, the other side of the village hall. Okay, which is no construction up to the playground. You can have events and carnival rides and everything else, and stretch it, food all the way down there, and, and still not bump into your construction.
The, one of the issues and the challenges, and John's hitting around it, for, for the road construction. You're absolutely correct. The big piece that you see here, just so everybody can kind of get an idea of what's going to take place, there's going to be an eight-foot deep trench running the entire width of our waterfront park for a substantial period of time this, this spring as that project gets completed. That's all cast-in-place concrete for the, for technical unit. By the time Marina Fest rolls around, that'll all be restored, and it could bleed down in behind the village hall. And it's, there's a fire pit down there, there's a number of things that can take place. One thing that was brought up was the idea of a reggae festival at the marketing committee level. I don't know how.
What's a reggae festival?
Well, that was originally the idea that was discussed with SBA. And that's what I was referring to, that long-term, I'd still like to see if we can do something like that.
What's a reggae?
Island music.
Island music, yeah.
The island vibes.
Marley, Bob Marley, Ziggy Marley.
A different John.
John.
Different John, you're with a different draw.
Okay, John.
Beach Boys.
No, Beach Boys. Go to YouTube tonight when you get home.
Yeah, Bob Marley.
And the Whalers.
We, we could conceivably go to our.
Even Scott does, John.
Yeah. You know, he was radical.
I was a little hoarse to the Scott now.
You could get a dreadlock.
Yeah, you could get dreadlocks.
Okay, all right, I got it. We're all going to go down to Key West for a week. To get indoctrinated.
I can't go drinking 25 years ago, there's no reason to go to Key West.
We can island hop to Jamaica, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we have a complex.
That's where your marketing money's going, travel.
Let's see, this is about our marketing meetings.
Somebody wants to go to China, I heard.
Okay, so we kind of made a consensus to kind of know what we're kind of thinking?
Yeah, because I, I know that the push was definitely to, and I believe that's the right way to push this money, is trying to get that pavilion noticed and make sure that people understand, and people want it to be a fun place, that they want to come and take their vans and take their kids. But I just, with the consensus of the marketing committee, I feel like it might have been misplaced money if we tried to do something larger like that this year.
Okay, so it's the consensus that the marketing committee shall focus on planning how many smaller events, or just?
Number.
I think multitude of smaller events.
Okay. Okay, planning a number of smaller events.
You want to do closed, right?
Which, what?
What's, the number of small venue.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, the extent of the season.
Okay, smaller events to be conducted throughout the season. Those events shall be planned with safety and with just difficult issues in mind, right? And the location, what about the location?
I think the location is flexible, smaller.
To be determined.
On the location.
Various locations to be determined.
Okay. And various locations are to be considered, all of that. Okay, so a discussion took place regarding this issue, and it was the consensus that the marketing committee shall focus on planning a number of smaller events to be conducted throughout the season in 2015. Those events shall be planned with safety and logistical issues in mind, and various locations are to be considered.
The only thing I'd recommend changing in there is to put a reason why. It's because of the construction that we're, you know, ongoing construction during the waterfront park construction timeline.
Anticipate waterfront park construction.
So due to that, that's why we're doing this, instead of, you know, so they know we changed direction for a reason.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. I would propose we take a short 10-minute recess, we're going to move into a closed session right after this. So see you in 10 minutes, at 10 to 8.
Ready to go back in?
Move that we come back into open session?
Okay. So I make a motion that we reconvene into open session. Roll call, Lino, yes?
Baker, yes.
Oh, yes.
Solomon, yes.
And Chris, yes.
And Zach, yes.
Okay, we're now back in open. Would somebody care to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we amend the job description for the clerk treasurer position.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, presented or something.
As presented.
As presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Should I just go down the list?
Yeah, yes.
All right. We'll also make a motion to Nick Janel, the acting assistant administrator for the village of Sister Bay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, I would like to make a motion to raise the salary for the active and assisting administrator to an even $45,000.
Maybe we should go more than $45,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We haven't said anything yet.
Hey, how much?
They're going to make you work for it, Joe.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to make a motion to allow $2,500 in furniture expenditure for the.
Reorganization.
Up to.
The reorientation of the, up to $2,500.
Janelle, second that up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I really just spent a lot of money just now.
Does that keep you awake at night?
Yeah, that's right.
Does that keep, doesn't?
Not at all. That's what finance does. They spend money. I would like to make a motion that we accept the evaluation of the administrator, Zeke Jackson, as was presented in our closed session, and that we give them a performance increase in base salary of $6,500. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Zeke.
Good job.
Good job, Zeke.
Let us know when you got it. Where's the motion about paying?
Assistant administrator.
That was what?
The board members.
We didn't raise.
So far, I'm 15, John.
You're throwing all kinds of money around here.
Just believe.
I think it's also.
California.
Okay, so you're accepting the performance evaluation of Zeke Jackson and grant him a performance, what is it?
Increase.
Performance increase.
Okay.
Wage increase.
These pay rates.
Yeah.
Performance.
It's a performance wage increase.
Yeah. Let's just make it four more.
Of $6,500 per year?
Yes. Got it all?
Yep.
Type gets smaller as the evening wears on.
I know.
Consider a motion to confirm and appoint President Leo's nomination. Zip-o. I'd make.
We just did, I'd make.
That was the updated personnel policy.
Yeah, the right personnel policy manual.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Consider a motion to discuss and act out a recommendation of the Personnel Committee to adopt an updated personnel policy and procedure manual.
Personnel Committee met, Admin and Comp Committee met, you guys met. You tasked the Personnel Committee with sort of dovetailing what the Admin and Comp Committee had done and what you all adopted into the personnel manual. The policy, as you adopted it, got inserted, were appropriate. This was provided in your packet. The one thing that was really added to it was all employees not subject to a specified contract should be subject to a 90-day probationary period. That's going to add it to the personnel manual. One cleanup piece, this came first at the door when we were revising family medical leave. I did research on that. And you all, it would appear after a conversation with council, need to amend on page 52, if you'll look it over here, Zoom. So what we're asking for is a motion to approve as amended tonight, where it says, item 23, family leave, A, that should be adjusted to 1,250.
Hours.
Hours. For sub-one of the two weeks, that should be up to 12 weeks. Item B, that should be up to 12 weeks. And then we should add a section according to the FMLA that is up to 26 weeks for a military-connected disability. So I'm going to give you guys the long and short of how wonderful our federal government is. They produced fact sheet number 28. This is not included in your packets, okay? So who was a covered employer, skipping down to that section, public agencies, including a local, state, or federal government agency, regardless of the number of employees it employs, school districts, blah, blah, blah. Eligible employees. So here's the confounding part. To be an eligible employee, you have to work at a location where an employer has at least 50 employees within 75 miles. So Randy and I went and looked a couple of places for this. And we thought the safe thing to do would be to default to FMLA versus not defaulting to FMLA, given that this looks to be on face inconsistent. So if it were to go to court, okay, you're requiring every local government, but now you've got to have 50 employees within that radius. It didn't make any sense to Randy. It doesn't make any sense to me, right? So there should be a statement somehow clarifying that. We couldn't find anything. So the suggestion was a venture policy manual to replace the family medical leave act default.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the piece I wasn't sure of was the number of employees. I knew we didn't have enough weeks in there otherwise.
I didn't realize it was a requirement for all local, any government agency essentially, school districts, federal, state, local, tribal.
Would somebody in personnel like to make a motion?
Item number eight. I make a motion to act to recommend to the Personnel Committee to adopt an updated personnel policy as.
You make the motion to accept the recommendations of the Personnel Committee?
Make a motion to accept.
As amended.
As amended. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Do you want me to note those revisions in the minutes were?
Yes.
Okay, so what were they again?
1,250 hours.
Okay, so 1,250 hours for FMLA.
Okay, 12 weeks. Family leave. It's unpaid for sections one and two.
12 weeks of family leave, okay.
And then a section shall be added to include up to 26 weeks of unpaid family leave for the care of a military-connected disability.
Okay. That up to how many weeks?
26.
26 weeks.
Yep. That was an interesting nugget. I didn't realize.
FMLA.
I didn't know.
FMLA will be, shall be allowed for what?
Military-connected disabilities. Disability care.
Could I mention a spelling?
Sure.
There. Page 54 on the Zoom, under the clothing policy, each employee is expected to manage their purchases. We've got mange down.
We'll see about getting that fixed, Scott.
Okay.
Head spell check didn't get it because mange isn't.
Takes eyes. Foggy eyes.
We're good enough, Scott.
Scott?
Okay, so it should be amended that it states that there's 1,250 hours for FMLA, 12 weeks of unpaid family leave, right?
Yes.
And a section shall be added that up to 26 weeks of FMLA leave shall be allowed for military-connected disability care.
And that's also unpaid.
Yes, also unpaid. All these are unpaid. You guys, as part of FMLA, you can require, it's kind of default back there away in the policy, that they use all of their PTO before they do this. You can mandate that as part of this guideline that the Department of Labor puts out. The way your policy is set up now of that new PTO is if they have a short-term disability, since you all carry short-term disability insurance, they're required to apply for it on day six. Yeah. And then they can, if they do augment with their PTO, it's reduced by that amount. So it'll be half administrative, just a tidbit.
Radio one?
Yes, sir.
Item number 12. I don't believe there is item number 12 tonight. I thought we did that. We didn't do that. Okay, sorry. Administrative Committee did meet and made some recommendations to change one of the marketing committee positions. And that was to put Drew Bickford in as the SBA member and remove Paige as a result.
You putting in who?
The new president-elect of the SBA. So that's my recommendation.
Motion on second out there.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did the other person get appointed, the outside person?
Kathy Goki?
Yes.
Tara.
Tara, yeah.
Kathy.
I'll tell you that I made an error this last meeting. I didn't realize she'd been appointed at the September meeting. And so that's in our packet. Last meeting, we corrected that today.
Okay.
But she was appointed as previous, yeah.
Okay. That's where I was, didn't catch that. All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carrie, thank you.
Okay, so do we replace this Paige as a member of the marketing committee, correct?
Yes, correct. Item number 13, reporting county activities. Some county supervisor, Dave Lino. The report is, I had a wonderful two weeks in Florida. Did not attend any county meetings. Steven Laddie's laughing at that one. Review of the financial statements, consideration of the motion to approve the monthly bills.
I'll do my best, Julianne's upset.
Hold on just one moment. We do a motion, then discuss, right? Yes. Motion by Lino to pay $788,984.7 cents. I'll second it. Discussion.
Page 80 of the Zoom, Village Page 1. Got loan fee for the beach project. What's that? We have to start at the beach. What is the loan fee on it?
We needed to go ahead and pull the loan for that. You all have authorized it from a borrowing standpoint. And because of how the tax billing fell this year, we went ahead and pulled the loan so that we could cash flow as we needed to.
Okay, so this is what, an interest or?
It's the origination fee.
Origination fee.
Loan fees, yes.
Yep. We had old land sales with line-up where we thought they wouldn't. If there weren't so many title defects, things would have felt what we thought they would. They just didn't.
And on the same page, down later, you got Charter Communications, you got Boathouse Charter TV. Is there any way we can sleep that TV in Boathouse? I think Boathouse is locked down for the winters.
I don't know when that bill was from, but I'll find out.
I don't know, but I know we talked about it before, but we didn't.
Yeah, I thought they did that last year.
This is, they should be able to. There's no reason to pay it for.
Yes, you can. It's like a $15 monthly.
You have a $15 versus $70.
Sure.
Right.
That's great.
John, I'll check into that. It seems like for some reason, the Boathouse, that we couldn't. I'm vaguely.
Well, I know, I remember I brought it up. We were saying we didn't know if it was going to be rented. And we didn't want to shut it down before we did that. And that's my recollection. But there seems to me it's not rented. So if it's not rented, cut it down.
You know, or vacant for till. Janelle, would you know that I'm referring to an employee?
Page 86 of the Zoom, Village 7, Pinkert Lot, Lot Firm. Page 86, Village, page number seven of your Pinkert Lot Firm. You've got old-school deed for $3,062. Why are we paying $3,000 for a deed?
Well, do you know what we had to go through to get that deed?
When you own the property and you're trying to sell, you've got to give them a saleable deed to sell.
You had so many title defects, all right? So I can't tell you how many hoops Randy has been jumped to get to where we are. The latest one was the school board never authorized the sale to.
When they gave it to Sister Bay, how many years ago?
Thirty-ish.
They never authorized my motion to give it to Sister Bay.
And so Randy had to go to the school board. Then he had to track down that school board president, have a conversation. He tracked down a letter in the school board's files that said, we're intent on giving this to you. Oh, by the way, you need to take over insurance and maintenance on the property as of whatever date, 1980-something, right? So it was, it was like pulling teeth.
Okay, well, you answered the question.
All these real estate things that he's been working on go so deep into stuff.
That's where the bills are so bad.
Anybody else?
Utilities.
What page on the Zoom?
Zoom 92. Third of the way down, Public Service Commission, rate case processing. Just need a definition. I'm not.
We do this, it's flip-flop every year, water and sewer water, sewer water.
Right, that's cool.
So right now, what is out there is, just like we require for development agreements, a developer to pay for whatever the development fees are for the attorneys to generate a development agreement. Same thing for WPS in processing our rate cases. They spend hours and hours and hours of research. People file protests and they contend with those. So this is covering our rate case for this coming year.
Okay. Want an increase, you got to pay for it. All right, anybody else? Ladies? No challenges? Okay, there was a motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
True, thank you. Discussion regarding matters to be placed on future agenda referred to a committee official or employee.
Okay, so so far, I've just got that the Marina manager, so we asked to see if it would be possible to temporarily disintegrate television service for the Boathouse.
Yes, under the agenda item before.
So it's, we're referred to.
Referring to.
We need to clean up the personnel manual.
Including the mange.
Mange, yes. Got to get rid of mange.
There's not a manager.
And they call it, Janelle, they call it vacation hall, just so you know. On charter, they call it vacation.
Vacation hall, okay.
I was searching for that word.
Okay. To, okay, please.
We need to refer closed session items to Julianne.
Find the money somewhere.
Okay, so now how do I?
That's how you're going to find it, to refer to Julianne. Good job. Way to delegate.
Okay, so how do I put that in the minutes?
Refer closed session items to Julianne.
Okay.
Finance director.
Okay, closed session items shall be referred to the finance director.
Yes.
Okay.
For action. Okay, committee reports. Administrator has met multiple times. He took action on a member of the county. Bear sure oversight has not met. Coast to byway.
Meeting was November 12th. There was no December. The minutes in there are from November. Again, updating the website. That was all we did.
Laddie would like to know what the plan is for our kiosk.
Well, when the construction is done, we will have that situated.
Can I explain why I ask?
Sure.
Sure.
They're thinking of the tourist bureau is thinking of doing another tour of all the kiosks, maybe just some of them. We've got more of them now. In last spring, they took a Door County trolley to each one of the existing kiosks and stopped briefly and talked to the town chairman or whatever. And it was kind of, and we did a video on it.
I think that was October. That was last October.
Video was a year ago on October. Yeah. So you can see it on YouTube. We thought we'd do it again. We have new kiosks. That's why I was asking about that.
We've been using the Sister Bay as a traveling kiosk, some of the parades and such.
So I heard.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's, we've had to contend with the construction downtown or down the waterfront.
So I've heard, heard a lot about that.
DCECD.
The minutes in the packet are from October. I covered that. Basically, we had a presentation on the Horseshoe Bay Farms reuse farm, reuse plan. The December meeting, election of directors, election of ex-officios. You made it again, Zeke.
Yep.
Okay. Worked on the strategic work plan priorities for 2015. I don't know if anybody knows, but the Bass Master Tournament is a goal. December, or excuse me, September seventeenth through the twentieth of two thousand and fifteen. They're looking for some nice income for the county.
Does everybody understand how we got that, why and how we have that bass tournament in Sturgeon Bay? The Bay of Sturgeon Bay was named the number-one bass fishery in the United States.
Yes, I did see that.
And as a result, the ESPN Bass Tournaments have decided that they would like to come participate in that fishery, along with a number of the other bass tournaments that were held.
This will be a final. They have elimination all through the year, and this will be the final, this is like the Super Bowl.
The championship, right.
The Super Bowl. ESPN, the whole smear is gonna be here.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big deal.
It's a whole week-long plus thing, yeah.
September seventeenth through the twentieth.
Oh, it's early in the month.
Of fifteen.
Which is a good time of the year, I'll serve.
It is, 'cause they thought it might be the last week or early October, and that would've been, this is better.
Fairly slow time in the county, too.
Yes.
Yep, the visitor bureau at their meetings, and the year of the fish.
Okay, Economic Development. Has not met. Finance. Has not met. Had multiple meetings, which was a result of some of the stuff that we're doing, too. Correct, yes. Fire. Representative is not here to report.
I was there. We, I wasn't prepared for this. We met on the eighth. Nothing outstanding. We have a bid on one of the engines to sell. Also, we are, the new tanker is under construction, do ready, mid, delayed February, and they will be paying us a seventy-five dollar a day late delivery fee, which started mid-September. Because they're late.
Sounds good.
Current calls are, call list was passed out, fire calls up, EMS slightly down. That's pretty much it.
Fire District Exploratory has not met. Historical Society.
Spinning their wheels.
They had their last meeting of the season in early December, and had their Christmas party, kind of wrapped some things up, they're planning a speaker, and probably up here in Sister Bay in April sometime. And I think that was pretty much it, there wasn't anything too outstanding there either.
I know, we should make a note to run up that board to contact Al Yonkey about the old-school building and the bricks and materials there and...
They've talked to him a number of times, and they went up and got a few desks and things that they wanted from there, and I believe that that's been completed.
All right, now I gave the number off to Don Howard, and I gotta ask a question about the other day. They would be willing to donate, I contacted Gokis, and I said, "Yeah, they, they do want to donate bricks or whatever as they get to the building process."
But they aren't gonna meet again until at least April.
And, and they, he had heard that there's a beam up there, that everyone who worked on the school had signed, if you talk to Al, he would be interested in getting that, if that's possible.
If they see it when they're doing the demolition, they'd like it, to be able to get the, that beam. They did it, they took it to that.
I guess I'd ask a question, I've not seen this beam, I don't know where it is, I don't know if any of you all know where it is, is it possible to chainsaw it out of there before demolition takes place?
They believe it was up in the rafter somewhere, you know, up as one of the rafter parts.
I would think likely that that would be destroyed, so if that's a piece that can be chainsawed out, somebody should...
Yeah, nobody seems to know exactly where it's located, that's why they just...
Oh, okay, I just said if you come across it.
Right, they basically said, it's, keep an eye out, and if you can get that, 'cause one of the guys came and, or somebody called them, and they heard the schools be demolished, and told them about it, and said that the crew all signed their names in there and...
Library Building.
No meeting in December.
Marina and Marina Fest.
Marina met on December second. The main thing is we had the bid letting for the public side of the restrooms in the Marina, and we opened them and accepted a little bidder, and then we had some bid that came in that Zeke was gonna follow up with a lawyer on, seeing if we could accept it as timely.
Yep. The timely part is satisfied, we've still got some issues to get through with the contractor, had another conversation today before we move ahead with granting a contract award. I anticipate January we'll be looking at that.
All right, what was the issue, anything significant?
Nothing I wanna talk about on camera.
And the rest of the construction on the Boathouse, I believe is probably done, 'cause I've seen the invoice for it, for the petitions on the, not Boathouse, but the Marina building for the entire Marina bathrooms are coming along, so it'll be completed.
Marina Fest, anything they had there? Parks.
I got nothing, I wasn't there.
Has, has met.
Has met.
Discuss the ice rink, I mean, I wish you minutes with our...
Discuss the ice rink and the lack of ice.
They should be able to make ice this week, aren't they?
You mean discuss...
Yeah, it's cold now, yeah.
So you can get your big grand party, it should have ice.
Hope so. Personnel.
Members from the pack, Chairman's not present.
And we discussed, we already discussed the, yeah.
And we're by, we're handled as a result.
To the manual, I'm actually getting ready.
Plan Commission, again, there's minutes in there, but you handled a lot of items on the agenda tonight were generated by the Plan Commission. They've been busy. Communication and Technology has not met. SBAA.
They did have a December meeting. Good portion of it is working on budget. A little bit of discussion on the Film Fest. The budget is to be approved in the January meeting, so there was just a lot of the work being done, what should be in it, how much, and there will be, they're looking at cutting back some on the sponsorship of the bike event now that it's been started, because they contribute quite, it was like five-thousand-dollar item that they were, to get it going, and I figure we should be, we go back to half of that now. I think that was one of the major changes, looking at concerts and things like that, starting to get those lined up.
Teen Center.
No meeting.
Tourism Zone Commission.
There was a meeting, the Visitor Bureau did their presentation of their plan for this next year, and that was probably, that was a good portion of the meeting. What can I say? One of the interesting things they're just kind of lightly looking into, not as far as actually doing it, but just as far as the same thing a developer or some type of thing, is they went, Jack and a couple people went to the Dells and saw the dormitories and things they put up for staff, for summer staff, for students and stuff. So that's one of the things that they wanted to investigate a little bit. And then, of course, the bass fishing tournament, and a number of other things that they kind of have planned. They changed, during the year, they had changed companies that was handling their advertising, so they had some reps there from the new firm that they've been working with. And the new tagline is like no, like no place else was the last one, they're trying to go a little more, I forgot what it is, a little more inviting in there.
You're not helping their tagline sail here.
It just escaped me, I heard it once, when we were there. But, I don't know, they wanted to be a little more inviting, I, I kinda liked the other one better, but...
It's funny, 'cause when she was, when she was struggling to find the tagline, all I could think was Michigan.
Yeah.
It shows you how well Michigan has ingrained their tagline into everybody's psyche.
Wasn't just one word on top, Michigan, pure Michigan. Pretty good.
It is.
Utilities.
Good commercials.
Has an upcoming meeting. No, okay.
Full discussion.
Admin and Comp Oversight.
Done. I'm proud of you guys, just adopted and not, always done for the time being.
Waterfront Oversight.
Won't have calls to meet in two or...
Yep, a little bit further along.
A little bit further along with these projects, and guys, just so you, as he checks out this last one, I'm remiss to press ahead with anything really new or not, not knowing what the final Butchers Bill is gonna be on these other projects.
You still getting this letter?
Yeah, that's there. It's budgeted.
Have you seen the progress?
I've got the topsoil pulled off.
Right there, they made the cut. The cut is there, waiting for the Phil to come in. I'm so excited.
Yeah, your kids will enjoy it.
Yes, exactly. There being no other business to conduct, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Laddie.